Flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everybody, and welcome. It is the planning board's March meeting, March twenty five. It's a little bit after five P M. And we have our full board is here today. And for those who don't know, this Kathy Iceman from Nelson Pope of Orhe's is there. She's our environmental consultant, that's Doris Alvarez. She's everyone knows Doris. She's in the building department. She's our secretary and Liz Vale is our attorney over here. So, uh, meeting is called order. So why don't we start with minutes? And if you've all had a chance to take a look to the minutes. I'll accept a motion. Sure, we lost them.
I move to adopt.
Thank you.
Setting.
Thank you, Drew. All those in favor of adopting the minutes.
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you. We'll move right on to a work session. It's the item. It's number three, but it's eleven Bridge Street LLC. I'm sorry. Yeah, eleven, eleven Bridge Street, seven eleven Bridge Street. Discussion on the D E I S Nelson Pope of Orhe's completeness review. And I think we have John Ellsworth. Yes, we do. Up on.
Yeah.
From.
Screen.
Yeah, he works with Kathy and he's our secret. Expert, I'd say.
Guru.
Hi, John. Guru.
Hello.
John, you want to walk us through it a little bit?
I'm sorry, what's that?
You want to walk us through the where we are? E I S?
All right, let me, uh, share my screen. I, this is always a challenge every time I do this.
Take your time. For those of you who, or to remind people in the audience, the applicant has been has submitted a couple of versions of the D E I S. Starting back in, I don't know, December, perhaps, I'm not sure. But we have developed, we, the board has has not accepted as complete yet. So we, they, they go back and they answer some more questions that we have asked them to look at. And that's where we are. We're back to reviewing any revisions that they did after we said, hey, we need some more information here or there.
Okay, can you see the draft memo?
Yes, see it over here. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So I'll just walk you through this. This was submitted for the board's consideration and we also prepared a draft resolution for the board's consideration. So we'll walk through the memo first. So it's similar to the prior memos on the review of the D E I S, but bottom line is we are suggesting that the D E I S has been amended to the point that it would be appropriate for the board to deem the document as complete for the purpose of commencing public review. And I'll get in a little while, I'll get into what that actually means. So the memo goes through the sequence of submissions and reviews. And indicates that we received a re-submission, I believe it was the third submission, the second revision of the D E I S. And then based on our review of that, we had a couple of little tweaks that we suggested. So there was a follow-up submission from the applicant with some replacement pages for the D E I S. And then based on our review of the original third submission of the D E I S and the replacement pages, our recommendation is for the board to consider that the D E I S is complete. Understanding that that's more of a procedural step, allowing the document to be released for public review. You're not making a determination that you agree with anything that's in the D E I S. And also understanding that there's another step in the process when the document, if the board decides that the D E I S is complete and it's issued for public review, the board, Nelson and Pope, providing technical assistance and everybody else who receives the D E I S and who has access to it can go into what's known as the substantive review of the D E I S and provide very detailed comments and questions at that point. The purpose of the completeness review, the thing you're considering right now is just to make sure that there's enough information in the D E I S that it conforms to the scope that you adopted a few months ago in terms of its content. That basically your checking box says, yes, there's information on that that the public can read and comment on. So we, there's a section of this on the procedures. Moving forward, if the board deems that the D E I S is complete, and I'll circle back to that. But we wanted to note that there are certain issues with regard to the, the D E I S is the most recent version that, at the very least, these issues will have to be addressed, but it's likely in the detailed review that there'll be other questions and comments. So these issues that were identified during our review of the, the D E I S that was submitted for completeness review, they are going to have to use a pile foundation for the building, given the shallow depth to groundwater and the characteristics of the soils on the site. As of right now, they don't have, they've identified options for pile foundations, but they don't have information that would allow them to discuss the impacts and what the mitigation would be. But they have indicated that their geotechnical investigations are scheduled for, they said the spring, we're there now. So the board, in accepting the D E I S, if that's your decision today, it would be with the understanding that these geotechnical investigations would be completed. And any analysis of impacts and discussion of mitigation measures would have to be resolved in the next step in the process, which is commentary on the D E I S and then all the comments on the D E I S will have to be addressed in the next step in the process, which is the final environmental impact statement. So we will have all of the information necessary for the board's decision in the next step of the process. So they said they're going to do this geotechnical investigation. We'll have detailed information on how that, the implications that has for the, the foundation installation. Another thing is that the, there was a a back and forth about the preparation of a stormwater pollution prevention plan because their original proposal had the area of disturbance is slightly less than one acre, which is the regulatory threshold for requiring what's known as a SWIP, a stormwater pollution prevention plan. But through the back and forth in the review of the D E I S, they added a handicap spaces in the parking lot at five Bridge Street, which have to be constructed on concrete foundation. And that actually put them slightly over the one acre threshold. So they will have to prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan. So they had a little discussion in the D E I S about what that would entail. And so for the F E I S, we would look for a bit more analysis to ensure that the management of stormwater is going to prevent impacts. Another issue that related to these geotechnical borings that will be undertaken within the next few months is the degree to which de-watering will be needed for the site and what that entails, whether the potential impacts, what do they have to do to mitigate those impacts? So again, the recommendation is that the board consider accepting the D E I S as complete on this issue, knowing that we'll get additional, more detailed information in the F E I S. Then the next issue that is not fully addressed in the the D E I S that the most recent version of the D E I S is the historic characteristics of the building at seven Bridge Street. We've asked for information on this and basically the applicant has said, whatever the impacts are to that building, our project will be designed to mitigate those impacts because it'll be reminiscent of the village's historical character. So for the F E I S, we would look to have a deeper dive on this issue, potentially including input from the Board of Historic, the Village's Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review. The next issue that was identified that we know has to be addressed in the next step in the process is with regard to the use of the the property at five Bridge Street for parking for the proposed development. Currently, it is used for public parking and it has been used in the past for public parking. We understand that the applicant has a long-term leach to that site. But in terms of our interpretation of the SEACER regulations, it is, it does qualify as an impact that they are converting the use of this parking lot that has been used for public parking to private parking. There's an indirect impact that's going to decrease the availability of public parking in the village. We've asked them to address this and multiple times and they haven't. So in the F E I S, one way or another, we're going to do a more detailed review of what the impact will be on public parking when that property at five Bridge Street is taking out, taken out of the inventory of available public parking. Our next issue is there is a lot of, there's a bit of confusion and ambiguity about what the Brownfield cleanup program for this property entails. The applicant has indicated to us that they don't need to undertake this review for the purposes of allowing the property to be developed with residential use. I have had some initial discussions with the project manager under the B C P Brownfield Cleanup Program at the D E C. And he, the information I've gotten from him conflicts with that. So we'll take, take a closer look at the documents for the Brownfield application, have follow-up conversations with the D E C to get clarity on this issue because it's important to know the relationship between this cleanup and the proposed action. Whether it is truly voluntary, they don't have to do it. They're doing it for other reasons like tax benefits, or if they need to clean the property up to get it to a level that allows residential, residential development. The next item is the conceptual site plans for the development alternatives. There were questions about the feasibility of those because they show just an entrance to a stairway and an elevator at the ground floor level and then two levels, two building levels above that. And they're calling that a two-story building because they're saying that the entrance to the stairway and the elevator is not counted as a story. So there's a question about what, whether that is accurate under the village code. So we'll have further discussions internally about that, but we didn't think it was something that should hold up acceptance of the D E I S. And the actual feasibility of a development with just a stairway entrance and elevator entrance at the ground floor. Again, these are just intended to highlight certain key issues that we know are going to have to be addressed in the F E I S. It's not the only issues that we expect to be identified. We're going to re-review the D E I S and all of its appendices in further detail, have discussions with the other agencies and interested parties as necessary to make sure that at the end of this process, when we prepare the F E I S, that it's suitable for the, the board's decision-making. It's important to keep in mind, certainly if anybody has any questions, jump in. I've been on a monologue here for the first fifteen minutes. It's important to recognize that under SEACER, the D E I S, the thing that you have in front of you now is the applicant's document. They, the applicant writes it and it's their content. It does, it is required to go through this completeness review, but the board doesn't get to write the D E I S. They just get to either accept it or comment on the content of it. In strong contrast, the F E I S, the next step in the process, the board as the lead agency has complete control over the content. As a matter of fact, you're responsible for the content under the SEACER regulations. You can't rely on anybody else to put that content in the F E I S because it's going to be the basis of your, the final step in the SEACER process, which is your finding statement, your conclusions about the, the project. Typically, the applicant is asked, asked to draft the first version in the F E I S because they've done all the studies and have a more intimate knowledge of the site plans and things like that. But you don't have to accept anything the applicant submits for the F E I S. You can undertake studies yourself if you're not satisfied with what they submit and you can modify, edit whatever they submit to prepare your own F E I S.
Okay.
Did you want to, I think up here, there's like next steps.
It's on page two, John. I'll have to wait through.
Okay. All right. So if the board, just for looking forward, so you know what you're getting into. If the board decides today that the D E I S is complete for the purpose of public review, you'll also, and this is in the resolution, the draft resolution, you'll also be scheduling a public hearing. The, the hearing is optional under SEACER, but we know that the board wants to have the maximum opportunity for public participation so that you'll want to have a hearing. The hearing has to be no less than fifteen calendar days after today and no more than sixty calendar days. So the resolution calls for the hearing, the draft resolution for your consideration calls for the hearing to be at your next regular meeting. So we have, we have drafted a joint notice of the E I S completion in, in the hearing. And this will coordinate with Doris and Liz, but this has to be published in a newspaper of general circulation, no less than fourteen days in advance of the hearing. The D E I S public review period has to remain open for written comments at least ten days after the here, the close of the hearing. And then also at least thirty days, calendar days after the, after today, if you decide the D I S is complete. So with the hearing tentatively scheduled pending your okay for your next meeting, the key here is it'll have to be, the comment period will have to remain open for at least ten days after your next meeting. The resolution that has been, the draft resolution that has been submitted for your consideration would close the the comment period for written comments about a month after the hearing date, whatever that Friday is, that's about thirty days later. We will coordinate with the applicant for the number of copies that are needed of the D E I S for distribution and I'll go over it in a little while. And we will, NPVA will submit the required notice to the environmental notice post. So we have a, we have drafted a notice what, that will provide for the distribution of the D I S, if that's your decision today, that has the date of the hearing as per the draft resolution and the closed days for comments. And a list of, a distribution list for agencies who will receive flash drives with the D E I S on it. And also calling for three paper copies with two at Village Hall and one for the John Germain Library.
And John, I'll jump in for a second and just remind people that every, this will be on the village website as well.
Sorry, yes, it will be on the, posted to the website.
It'll be readily available to, to the public that way. But you can also see it at the library in person if you want to. It's, I don't know. A thousand pages or something like that. It's a lot.
It's big, yeah.
Okay. John, let me jump in for a second. You and I had a little bit of a back and forth today via email about a couple of issues that I had noticed. And I was, I was wondering, hey, how do we bring this up? Just explain to us as these, as we noticed different issues bubbling up. And one, for example, was that I noticed that the the labeling on elevations in the appendix L on, on which side is the west side, which side is the east side are swapped. They're backwards. When, when is it proper for us to have these? When do we bring that back up? When do we as a board or people in the public, obviously the public, they can, they can speak at the public hearing, but when do, when do we bring more things to, to, to bear, to be, to be talked about?
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, the, the item that you mentioned, I'll, I see Tiffany's on the line. In appendix L, the labeling of the east and west elevations are reversed. The east elevation is labeled as the west elevation and west elevation is labeled as the east elevation. So those should be corrected in what is submitted for circulation. That's the only additional change that should be made to the D I S before it's circulated.
Tiffany, I think that's on pages forty-one and forty-two.
Okay, we can make those changes. No problem.
Thank you. It's modern.
And then, Mr. Chairman, the other two issues we did discuss that we can handle, that can be handled in the same way as the, the issues that I went through that are identified in the memo. These came up based on further review of the D E I S as we're proceeding. So it, it didn't make its way into the memo. There was a question about the floodproofing of the first floor. There is information in the D E I S that provides a general, general description of what that will entail in terms of how high the floodproofing will be and what type of floodproofing, they call it dry floodproofing. But we can and will ask for more specific details on that. So the board understands how that will work, how, how, what they're proposing will keep the building from getting flooded. And then the other issue that we had discussed is regards to building height. The architectural drawings show that the, the building is thirty-five feet in height, but that's measured to the flat roof and the parapet of the building and the rooftop appurtenances, the HVAC equipment would extend above that. And as we, you're reviewing the code right now, it's not clear that those are excluded from the definition of height. So there's a question as to whether the building actually complies with the thirty-five foot height requirement. We'll get into that in further detail in the in-depth review of the D E I S if the board accepts it as complete tonight. And I'm sure there'll be, as we do the more detailed substantive review of the D E I S, I'm sure there will be other questions that come up.
I'm sure there'll be many. That's, that's just how it works. But thank you. I want, I want to make sure there's clarity for us, but also for the public that there's, there's opportunity going forward for questions to be raised and questions to be answered. So thank you.
And there, I don't know if you want to, if we're ready to, or if you had any questions about the memo, if we're ready to talk about the draft resolution, which goes through the the sequence of events that got us to this point and what the board is resolving to do moving forward, some of which we've already discussed about. If they decide to accept the D E I S as complete, scheduling the public hearing and setting the end date for comments.
I'd like to open up to the board first and see if any of the board members have questions or comments or have things to speak. And then I might open up to counsel for the applicant, Tiffany Scarlato, if she wants to say anything as well. So board members, any, any comments?
John, if you can stop sharing screens for a moment.
Always tricky.
There we go.
You did it. You did it. Board members, any questions, any comments, any, any concerns?
I, I guess there's the I believe if, if information comes in, for example, about the pile draw, about the piles after the public hearing, is there going to be another iteration available or depending on? Is, is there a possibility of more than one public hearing?
There is a possibility of one or more. Depending on the public interest of the first public hearing, the board can determine to hold a second public hearing or keep it open and adjourn it for additional public comment.
But I think to her point, if, if we open a public hearing and then close that public hearing, then the pile, say, that, that, the, the core information that we've been waiting, that John referred to during the spring reveals significant information. We have the ability to have a, a public hearing.
That I would have to check. John, have you experienced that after you've already closed it?
You, you can reopen the public hearing if stuff comes up to obtain further input.
For new information?
Yes.
The, the other thing is that although you don't always have a public hearing on a final E I S, I can, you could decide to do that if there's, you know, if there's reason to have a public hearing at that time.
Right. And that might make more sense to, to have a final E I S and then public hearing then. That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Good.
Could we talk a little bit more about, I'm, I'm just curious of the kind of the procedure with the other agencies and when the timeline and the additional boards kind of comes into play. So we touched on the D E C, obviously maybe having some conflicting opinions. So they're going to bore, boring the holes first or doing some tests. I'm assuming that's a set requirement based on the pilings that they're putting in. And then when does D E C come into play? And then the other boards, obviously we've got significant input needed from zoning and the architectural review board. Does that happen? Post the public hearing after the first report's back?
We could, I'll defer to Liz on, for more detail, but we would have interaction with the boards at, at the earliest possibility because they're, have important decision-making in regard to the overall action. So we'll want their input for consideration in the, the F E I S.
Right.
So that would be, to be clear, that'd be post-public here.
Post-public, the first.
It could be, we could get that process started before the public.
Or even before, but okay.
John, to come to those boards and, and present that the role of, of their comments would be, and also the scope of their comments with respect to SEACER.
Good.
And input for this board.
Does it, does it impact the finalization of the final environmental?
Yes, they, they.
They're contributing to that actually also.
Well, they're involved agencies. They're contributing to your record, draw upon to make your findings.
So that means that the Z B A is going to be weighing in on the variances that are required?
No, not the variances. I think they'll be weighing in on the the issues raised in the D E I S, right? They won't be considering the variances until the application is before the board for those variances. Then they'll be applying five-part test of the application before that.
That comes after the F E I S is. That comes after the F E I S is completed.
The applicant submits it, which they have not done. I think they're, they could submit it now and just wait for the finding statement or E I S to, you know, secret process to be complete before the Z B A issues a decision. However, they, they have not submitted that yet, so.
Okay.
For example, on the, the issue about the historic resource value of the, the building at Seven Bridge Street. We, we would look to the, the historic review board for input on, on that. Because we have not received anything from the applicant. But they, they wouldn't be weighing in on what their decision would be once the application is before them.
Good.
And also, it's important to point out, I, I think I mentioned that I did have a discussion with the project manager at the D E C for the brownfield cleanup program and he I did ask him and he agreed and he's been added to the list for distribution. He agreed that he would review the D I S with respect to the, the brownfield cleanup program.
Good, okay. Tiffany Scarlato, counsel for the applicant, do you want, do you want to weigh in on any of this?
I don't think we have any comments at this point. We would appreciate it if the board would accept the D I S as ready for public comment and set the public hearing. As John indicated, there are a couple of changes that have to be made before circulation and we'd be happy to make them and get them over to you.
Great, great. Thank you. Okay. Well, to me, we're at a point where we can, we can consider the, the resolution to adopt or to accept the D I S as complete. And I, I know we've been hearing about it. I've spoken to most of you. I think most of you are probably comfortable with that, but.
There, are you like considering your vote on the resolution now? Cause there was one thing that came up that I just wanted.
Yes, yes, please.
I don't think I can do this twice in the same meeting. Can you see the resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
So I think the board, I don't know if you want me to walk you through the resolution. But there was one addition that, based on my discussion with Liz, that we would want to add another resolved paragraph in there. And I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention and see if you're okay with it.
Sure, please.
All right, so it talks about setting the public hearing. And then setting the end date for the receipt of comments based on the public hearing occurring on April twenty-second, that you next regularly scheduled meeting. And as has been discussed today, there's the possibility that the board based on the level of interest expressed at April twenty-second hearing, might wish to continue the hearing to its next meeting. So we would add in a paragraph right here, after the saying, when the end date for written comments is, and it would read as follows. Resolve that in its discretion as the seeker lead agency, the board may opt to continue the public hearing and or extend the end date for the receipt of written comments on the D I S beyond the date specified herein. So as to ensure maximum opportunity for public participation and comments.
Okay, and that would go, that would go where, John? That's right after the?
The second to last resolved.
Yeah, so after the May twenty-three date.
It would go right after that.
Yeah, that sounds right. I mean, essentially what you're saying is, I'll, I'll try to clarify for the audience here. We'll have our public hearing next month. We anticipate there will be lots of interest in this. It might be that, that there'd be so much interest that it's going to be difficult to get through the whole thing in one night. If that's the case, we, we expect, we would consider extending the public hearing to the following month as well. In that case, obviously, it's after the second month, which is when, when we finally close the public hearing, when public comments could be written in. And you have, I guess, about thirty days or so at that point. Does, does that sound right, John? Good. So yeah, you're, you're making clear that, that might be how it works. And that, that makes sense to me. Do you folks have any, any questions about this?
I, I move we accept with the amendment that John described.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And we, it's, it's seconded by Granja. All, I, I can't imagine, any, all goes in favor of accepting adopting the resolution.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, good. So the D I S is now accepted officially. And, and thank you, John. That's
Thank you.
A lot of effort and it's, but it's very well done. You made it very clear for us. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Bye, John.
All right, have a good night.
Thank you, John. So to be clear, everybody, we, what we just said, did was we, we accepted the D I S, which was the draft environmental impact statement. We'll be having a public hearing on it next month at our regular meeting here at the planning board. That'll be April twenty-two, five P M. And then we'll see how many people show up and, and when we close the public hearing, then there'll be a period of time when people can write in comments as well. So that's what just happened. And Doris, you have paperwork I can sign later for this, is that right? We'll do that for the meeting.
John, John will send the amended, you, you want to send it by email, John?
Send the amended resolution, the, and I'll finalize the, the memo. I'll do that right now.
Bye.
And that, and that last paragraph you read.
I could also sign tomorrow if, if that's, if that's too, too tight tonight, John.
No, we can get it done tonight.
Audible. Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Bye-bye.
I know.
All right, let's move on. Number two, correspondence requiring action. Two Main Street owner LLC, Two Main Street and Twenty-two Long Island Avenue. Is there anyone here from that for representing that? What? Tiffany, of course. Yeah, there you are. I would look for you in the audience, Tiffany. I'm sorry about that.
I apologize. I will be there next month.
No, 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 all just out of habit. I look up and look, scan the crowd. We're considering a resolution tonight to commence C C R and coordinate a lead agency for, for the proposed application of two twenty-two. So Tiffany, if you want to speak to this?
I, we have presented an E A F. I do understand that it needs a couple of changes. We are working on getting the answers to those questions and we'll turn around and resubmit that E A F to you, but I would appreciate it if the board could commence, commence C C R pending the receipt of that E A F. I think there were five or six things I have to change and submit back to you.
Right, right. E A F for the, for those in the audience is an environmental assessment form, I think. And, and that's a, a, a regular process that applicants have to fill out. If it's not quite right, we ask them to, to do it. We, and so they're, they're going to improve that. But the environmental review, we can apparently adopt a resolution perhaps tonight to, if we want to consider a resolution tonight, right, to?
Yes, exactly. And we are also working on a completeness review. That is ninety-five percent done and I will be circulating that to the board tomorrow, probably.
Okay, okay. Do you folks understand? Understand, and any questions about this? It's, it's really just got procedural and getting involved, getting involved, moving. So the applicant doesn't lose another month waiting for it, you know, for us to pull the trigger on this. I think it's just kind of expediting things. For those in the audience, two twenty-two is the Cape House Building and the old seven eleven building. That's, that's what we're talking about. If you don't know the addresses. So we have a resolution in front of us that was crafted for us to vote on if we choose to do it. I think it's a good idea. I would accept a, but a motion to adopt the resolution to commence C C R. Drew, Drew, thank you. Granja, thank you very much for, for seconding.
You have to speak up from this meeting.
So all those in favor of adopting the resolution to commence C C R? That's unanimous. Okay. Is there anything else we have to talk about on that particular application tonight? That's it, right? Excellent. Thank you.
That resolution you want to sign at the meeting?
At the meeting, yeah. That sounds good. Remind me, please. Old business is, number one is Page Restaurant, Page Main LLC, sixty-three Main Street. I believe Tiffany Scarlato has requested that we postpone this and to the next month's meeting. Is that right, Tiffany? Good. So I need, I think I need to make a motion for that too, don't I? So a motion for that, please. Thank you, Drew. Seconded by Susan, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Thank you. So it's now pushed till next month, which is April twenty-two. Okay, new business. Site plan application of number two oh three Madison. It's it's been with in front of us for a little while. This is a public hearing tonight. So it's an opportunity for people to the public to speak to it if they want to. So what we'll need is a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Granja, for seconding. All the favor.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks. It's an open public hearing. So anyone for the, for the applicant that wants to be here tonight to speak to it? Hello, new names and?
Brian, I'm passing with the Adam Miller group, attorney for the applicant.
Monica, come on, two oh three Madison.
Hello, Monica, welcome back. Nice to see you.
I know we've been before you for a few months now, just before the zoning board last month. This application is also being for the A R B for discussion item with the intent to expand the existing structure to remain a mixed use first floor commercial with an expansion to the second floor of additional commercial and becoming two apartments. As part of the pre-submission conference, there were some comments, the application, we've addressed all those in our application before you have, we will be a complete site plan which addresses concerns regarding parking access off of Madison and Green Street. And I know we want to have a public hearing to address any comments from the public, so we're here to address any comments we have. But the intent here is to restore this structure to what it historically was. And this is what we have in.
Good, good. I guess I just have a couple of questions. I want, I want to make sure that, that, that I, I wanted to hear from you what the plan is going forward. At, at the pre-submission conference, there was, there were some comments and discussion about, say, the sidewalk. And when you're doing the work, it's going to disturb the sidewalk potentially, and you'll need to coordinate with the village. And also kids walk through there a lot, the schools, they're scaffolding and so forth and so on. Is, it, do you have a plan, a construction plan? We discussed having a construction plan.
How many went to see D R Lee? I'm gonna have to, I'm, I'm gonna be working with him closely and his office, Mike, I think his name is also. I already stopped by there, so I'm going to be working on that together, how we're gonna structure everything.
Okay.
But the sidewalk is ten feet wide, so you know, I'm planning to probably divide the sidewalk five feet for the construction and five feet for the walkway to go around.
Okay.
Which I do have a plan already.
Great.
Yeah.
Good. And I know you spoke as well quite well about parking issues during construction.
I have the plan already, so I can fit about twenty cars. The entrance will be off Madison Street. Then exit will be on Germain, so it's gonna be just going this way. So nobody will be parking on the street. So I'll set them.
They're going through the property.
Good, yeah.
So, so everybody's able to walk on the same side of the street that the sidewalk, basically standard sidewalk.
Enough to have ten feet.
That's great.
Where I'm gonna add the second floor, so it's actually working out really well.
Great.
It's really ten feet wide there? Wow.
Yeah, it's actually ten point three.
Wow.
Yes.
Specific. Okay, okay. Any questions? Other questions? Those are the people? Those are the ones I wanted to clarify. I'm gonna open up to the public in case the public has questions there. That's why it's a public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak to this, this application. It's, it's the house on the corner of Madison and Germain. Building, building, I should say, mixed use. Anyone online that wants to speak to this? Doris? Okay, okay. Well, if that's the case, Kathy, is there anything else we have to discuss before we close the public hearing?
We've discussed everything. If you'd like to close the public hearing, we can start working on the decision for next month. If that's the board's wish.
Let's do that. Let's do this. Let's, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Susan. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Hi.
Hi.
That's unanimous. So it's now closed. And so what do we need to do now, Kathy? We need to?
We don't need to do anything. Just prepare a decision. We'll be ready for next month.
I think we can't, we, and we don't have the information for the zoning board. We did, we heard back from the harbor committee.
Z B A will issue, they agreed to direct me to write a decision in favor of granting that.
Okay.
So I'll have a decision for that the next Z B A meeting. So I'll have it in your record before the decision is written for this board.
Okay. And we have, and we have, our, our committee already signed off on consistency review.
Yes.
And A R B, I believe, as well.
No, they have to go to A R B.
Oh, they do? Okay. Okay. All right, good. So next month.
There'll be some conditions in the approval related to other approvals, including A R B and the curb cut for Madison.
Okay.
Example.
Good.
I can see, Mike. I did, I did. So, yeah, and I was receiving word back from, from Shavoni who had asked for more information about the, the driveways.
Yes.
Yep, yep. And, and that, that is, who was okay with it, it's.
Excellent. Good. Thank you. You've been, you've been really responsive to everything we've asked you to do and you're very quick at it. So I, I appreciate that. We try to be quick for you as well. Thank you for that. Okay, good. Well then, we'll move on to the next item. Number two, site plan application of H R E A three Madison Street and we're calling it three and eleven Madison Street. This is a pre-submission conference. Which, which is relatively new to us. It's, it's what we they have not formally submitted an application yet, I guess. And, but it's, it's the first opportunity for this board and the public to really, to really weigh in and see the, the design and, and to comment. So we have Anthony Vermandois here. And welcome. Love to hear what you have to say.
Anthony Vermandois, sixty-eight, Union Street.
Let me, let me just say one thing. I think we should open the public hearing, right? I, I apologize. So I need a motion to open the public hearing. So move, Granja. Thank you, Granja and, and Larry. All those in favor of opening a public hearing?
Bye.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening. Anthony Vermandois, representing the property owners of number three, number eleven Madison Street. I am the architect for the project. What I'd like to do tonight.
Call your name, sorry for the reference.
It's Jason Victor, P R M A N, Jason David, O I S. What I'd like to do is go quickly through the project narrative here. Then talk a little bit about sort of the overall architecture of the project and then discuss where I think we're going to be at as far as required variance of scale for them. Okay, so the existing conditions. The subject properties, number three and number eleven Madison Street are adjacent to one another at the very start of Madison Street. Where it forks off to set, to the south from Main Street in the heart of the Village Business District. Number eleven is the slightly larger of the two properties at eight thousand three hundred thirteen square feet. Number three is seven thousand five hundred eighty-three square feet. That's the total property size, not the building sizes. The combined Madison Street footage of both properties is eighty point three two feet and both properties continue straight along to Church Street about two hundred feet to the east. about 200 feet to the east. There is an approximately 12-foot grade change from the highest point of the two properties at the southeast corner of Church Street to the northwest corner of Madison Street. Number three Madison Street boasts one of the most prominent structures in the business district, a three-and-one-half-story front gabled early Queen Anne-style building, perhaps incorporating an older structure. It features a ground-floor storefront and first floor enclosed porch. The ground-floor foundation is a mix of granite, stone, granite, stone and brick. The superstructure is wood balloon frame. The ground floor has been historically used for retail purposes. The current tenant is Loves Jack Fancy. Perhaps uniquely for SiteHarbor, the ground floor extends to the east into the former hill crest between Main, Madison Street and Church Street. Above this subterranean space is an open deck slightly higher than the surrounding graves. The first floor contains offices and storage space for the ground-floor retail and to the rear east and apartment access from the deck. The second floor also houses an apartment access from outside stairs and a small balcony or deck. The primary structure is listed as a contributing to the historic district and is generally well-maintained and in good structural condition. There are two existing one-story accessory structures on the number three Madison Street property, a 14-by-16-foot metal shed and an 18-by-68-foot wood-framed garage storage bar. Both structures are in dilapidated condition and are listed as non-contributing to the historic district. However, we believe it is worth noticing that historic photos and maps indicate the presence of at least two now vanished accessory structures on the property. There is no defined parking on the property, however, at various times, two or three cars have been observed parked alongside the dilapidated storage bar. Number 11 Madison Street is a two-and-one-half-story circa 1800 Georgian federal-style building. The ground-floor foundation is granite, stone and brick. The superstructure is timber-framed. As with number three, the ground floor has historically been used for retail purposes. The current tenant is Dylan. The first floor houses a large two-bedroom apartment. The second floor houses a one-bedroom loft-style apartment. The primary structure is listed as contributing to the historic district and has been very well-maintained over the years and appears to be in excellent structural condition despite its age. There are currently no accessory structures on the property, however, we believe it is worth noting that historic photos and maps indicate the presence of at least one now vanished accessory structure. Facing Church Street is a semi-defined parking area for free cars. There are no trees greater than 12-inch DBH nor any other natural or ornamental vegetation of any note on either property. The open space behind number 11, the number 11 primary structure extending to the small parking area off of Church Street is currently a maintained lawn. Proposed work. In summary, our proposed project entails adding a semi-detached addition to both primary structures, a one-and-a-half, a one-story restaurant behind number three, and a two-story four-unit apartment wing to number 11. The proposed restaurant would be built partly over the subterranean ground-floor extension of number three Madison Street, but leaving about 30 feet of separation between the restaurant and the existing first floor of the primary structure. The remaining open area in between will remain a deck containing, continuing to serve as access to the existing apartments and as a kitchen entrance to the restaurant. The 1600-square-foot restaurant divided, divided into approximately two equal parts. The west half will contain the kitchen and two bathrooms. The east half will be four seating, including 38 table seats and 10 bar seats. There will be a full basement containing a walk-in freezer, dry storage, staff and office rooms, and mechanical space. There will be four entrances, the kitchen deck entrance, a service entrance on the south wall, a secondary patron entrance on the west wall, which will be connected to Madison Street via a paved path and existing historic brownstone steps along the north side of the existing structure. The main patron entrance will be to the east, including a double door and an 18-foot nano-style floating door, door, a folding door across the remaining section of the east wall. The restaurant will have a gable roof running east-west, about 18 foot tall at its highest point above surrounding grave. A portion of the roof over the kitchen, minimally visible from ground level, will be recessed to contain mechanical equipment. There will be few alterations to the existing primary structure, modifying the deck and the stairs to the second-floor apartment and some structural reinforcement of the subterranean ground floor with a restaurant superstructure would overlap it. The proposed two-story apartment wing will be built behind, in other words, to the east of number 11. The building itself will have a footprint of 1,000 square feet. There will be two studio apartments, each 475 square feet on, on each floor. The first-floor apartments will have separate outside entrances. The second-floor apartments will share an internal space for access. The apartment wing will have a gable roof about, it's actually, we've lowered it, 17 feet now above surrounding grave at its highest point. It will be lower than the current primary structure roof ridge and designed to read as a dormer one-and-a-half-story structure. As with number three, we expect few, if any, operations will need to be made to the existing primary structure. We plan to significantly increase parking on the properties. Access will be via a shared influence off of Church Street. There will be five spots, including one ADA compliant, one on the number three side, and 10 spots, including one EDA compliant on the number 11 side. A driveway will extend beyond the parking between the apartment wing of number 11 and the deck of number three for delivery vehicles and emergency access. The necessity for parking will limit the amount of open and vegetated space. However, a portion of existing lawn at number 11 will be remained as a sort of courtyard between the old and new structures and about two-thirds of the existing deck between the old and new structures. So number three will remain. Construction is expected to take nine to 12 months. SiteHarbor Village Regulations Regarding Construction Hours Set Forth will be followed with hours posted on site. Disruption to existing tenants of both existing primary structures is expected to be minimal. Access will be, access to both retail and apartment units at number 11 is off Madison Street, which will not be impacted at all by construction. Access paths for the apartment tenants of number three will be provided. The retail tenant of number three may need to vacate the rear portion of the subterranean wing while it is structurally reinforced. We will try to do this work as quickly as possible during the off-season. A temporary project limiting fence, not less than six feet tall, will be erected along the Church Street side of the property. Any fill needing to be removed will be disposed off-site according to local, state and federal regulations. Parking, parking work and staging areas will be provided on Church Street side of the property contiguous with where the finished parking will be. So that is basically the, basically the project summary. And I want to go to the site plan here, which is also on the screen there. But I'm just going to sort of point things out here to you. We tried to shade this as best we could to kind of indicate, first of all, what are existing buildings. That's number three, and that's number 11. What are the proposed buildings? This is number three. This is number 11. Where the parking is here, and where landscaped area is that white hatch. This area here is that deck that I've been mentioning that's over that subterranean wing of number three. So a few things here, the plans here. So this is, this is the first floor plan of number three, showing the existing structure. This is towards Madison Street. This is the ground floor plan of number three. So you're showing here, this is that underground wing, which I mentioned. This is the restaurant being built partly over that, and this is the restaurant here. So you can see that sort of half of it is kitchen service area and half of it is seating area. This is basement number, number 11. Really anything to discuss here? This is the retail store, obviously. This is the first floor of number 11 Madison Street. So what we've tried to do here is, you know, keep this building, these four apartments separate from the existing building. This is a little bit of back and forth. We've had the discussion item at the ARB. One thing that they liked about the project is that both buildings being kept separate from the existing structures and sort of minimal changes to the existing structures. One thing that they did not like was that, and sort of our initial version of this apartment was the roof was higher than the, than number 11. So what we've actually done here is tried to, and you'll see this in the site section, tried to sink this down to the ground quite a bit. So it's actually going to, the ground level of the apartment wing will here will actually be about three feet lower than the, than the back porch for 11.
Anthony, does that building have a basement? I don't recall. The new building you're proposing.
New building, yes.
It will have a basement.
We're not, it'd be, you know, storage mechanical.
Okay.
Yep. And this sort of creates a little kind of something, you know, we're hoping to create sort of a little sort of something courtyard here between the, you know, for private use of the apartment tenants between the two buildings. This is, that's just the second floor plan of number three. This is the second floor plan of number 11. I mentioned 475 for all four apartments. We've actually reduced the square size, square footage of the apartments for number, number three to 434 square feet each on the second floor. That was just to achieve that kind of more dormer one-and-a-half-story look. And, and, you know, this here is the elevation of, the elevations here. So you can see here, this is the apartment wing here of number 11, and how we kind of try to sink this down, so the ridge height as well below that of number, the existing building at number three. Actually, on the other side, it's even, it's, it's, because the grade is, goes up a little bit, it'll even be lower. So the ridge height is only 17 feet here from, from grade. Yeah, and basically there will not be any changes at all from Madison Street. I mean, if you really struggled, you might be able to see a little bit of that roof of, of the addition to number 11. This is, you know, there's that great little brownstone staircase. Anybody who's walking by has seen that there. And the idea is that will be a secondary entrance to the restaurant there.
Right.
Kind of just a nice little way to kind of walk up from Main, Main Street to Madison Street and the rest.
Clarify for this for me. Is at the outset, these are contiguous to each other on, but they don't actually touch, do they, these two houses?
No, they do not. There's maybe, you know, you can see it here, there's maybe about, at its closest point, maybe about two feet of separation between the two buildings.
Okay.
And there is no attempt here to physically connect either of the buildings to each other.
Right.
Yeah, so this is, this here is just going out to three, you know, yeah, three Madison Streets. So this is, these are the elevations of the restaurant here. Try to keep this simple. One thing that, you know, that, that existing dilapidated barn, it's not contributing, it's structurally falling apart. But we do kind of like the perkiness of it, so we're maybe going to, you know, try to incorporate some sort of perky elements into the architecture of this.
Columns, perhaps?
Possibly, yeah. Well, there's that, that great kind of storefront entrance that's just sort of popped up against the side there. I mean, I think it would make a great bar back.
There you go.
Yeah, so that's, that's it for the drawings. You know, as I did mention, we've been before the ARB as a discussion item. It was at the end of a very long meeting, so it, you know, really didn't go too much into detail. As I said, sort of their one big thing was, was the original design of those four apartments, which was a much taller building with a flat roof. And they said, you know, bring that down, make that a more of a one-and-a-half-story look, which we've, which we've done. They did really like that we were keeping the buildings separate. Okay, I want to talk sort of briefly about the variances we were going to, we believe we're going to need to this, need for this. I did speak to the building inspector sort of at the very beginning in this project. Since then, the project has, of course, evolved a little bit, so I think some of the things that we originally talked about may not necessarily be relevant now, but, you know, this is kind of where we're thinking we're at at this, at this stage. As far as lot coverage and building coverage goes, we're fine for both properties. We're well under, under the 70% of roll. The one thing that we're having a little bit of trouble with is getting up to the 20% for the natural vegetation. And that is mainly because of, we're trying to maximize our parking. I think if you were to, even though it's not, obviously not natural vegetation, if you were to sort of take into account that deck that we're keeping, that does sort of give some additional open area that's being used for parking. As far as setbacks go, there's actually only one point where we're going to need a setback variance. And that's right here, where you've got this corner of the, of the restaurant building, because we wanted to keep this perpendicular to the existing buildings, which makes it a lot cleaner. But because the building is angled to the property, that does bring it, you know, to 2.5 feet here. And that is not, not going to a neighbor's property, that is actually going to the number 11, so it's not impacting a different property owner. We're maintaining the five-foot minimum to the property to the north. And, you know, it's probably close to 15 feet to the closest point of the proposed building on number 11, the neighbor to the south.
And it's not, it's not problematic that that ramp is over the, the border of the, from one property here to another?
I, I don't think it's going to be. I mean, I've got to say that we are still kind of trying to sort out the grading and the ramp and that sort of stuff. So, and this is all kind of, still a little, I have to say, a little bit in flux, but, you know, we are trying very hard to kind of, even though they, the same property owner, to kind of keep the properties kind of self-contained on their own property, even though obviously they're going to be sharing a property. One thing, one interesting thing here is with building heights. And that's kind of depending on whether or not these are called accessory structures or part of the primary structure. Since Ken and I had a little bit of conversation with that, I think we're going to be calling these accessory structures. If they were part of the primary, additions to the primary structure, we could go up to 35 feet. As accessory structures, they can only be 15 feet by code, and both buildings are going to be a little bit taller than that. So we will probably need a height variance for that. Now, one thing, interesting thing about how the, the code works here with apartments is bizarrely, for SiteHarbor, and I brought this up to the board for trustees, for many, many times, you're not allowed to have apartments by code in a primary structure in the Village Business District. So we would, if the apartment was connected as part of the primary structure to number 11, we would actually need a variance to put apartments of any size in them. As an accessory structure, you're allowed to do it. I think the, I think the rule is 750 to 1,200 square feet. So we wouldn't need variances to have the apartments, but we would need variances because they're smaller than the 750 square feet. They're, you know, 475 and 435 square feet. So then the other sort of big part issue here with variances and things like that is, and a sort of complicated thing, of course, as it always is in the business district, is parking. So right now, the buildings, as, as is taking into account the square footage of the existing retail spaces and the number of apartments in the two buildings, I believe that we would be required to have 22 spots. There are, at best, you could argue there are maybe six spots existing. So we kind of have like, you know, maybe 16 spots there that are grandfathered. As far as the additions go, addition goes, restaurant is, you know, 48 seats, that works out to 12 spots, 48 divided by four, let's say, four or five staff. So we're looking at maybe 16 to 17 spots that would technically be reserved for the parking, for the number three. Then for the apartments, you know, they're all studio apartments, so that's 1.5 spots, so that's another six spots for, for those apartments, because 1.5 per apartment, which is bizarre, but that's, that's what it is. So, you know, we're looking at a total of sort of 30 additional spots, maybe. No, sorry. Well, maybe about 24 additional spots for what we're proposing. We've got the six grandfathered spots, and then we've got, we're providing 15 spots. And then I think that leaves us with needing a variance for 15 spots. Sort of as how we, that's the code, as how we sort of envision this, this. working reality, most likely of those fifteen spots we're going to use, there're going to be two ADA spots that are probably rarely if ever used. Then there're probably going to be spots for, one spot, spot, spot reserved for each of the apartments. The remaining spots for staff at the stores and restaurant staff. And then most likely the actual restaurant pays patrons will, you know, like every restaurant in Sag Harbor will either park on the, park along the street, park in one of the bigger parking lots, or we may, may set up some sort of valet parking situation. So that is sort of basically where we're at.
So to, to clarify, it sounds like, um, uh, I'm going to be clear about this. These apartments you talked about, but it sounds like you're not making them workforce housing apartments, because that's a different zoning situation altogether.
Different zoning system. Uh, right now, we're envisioning them as being market rate apartments. You know, if
Rentals.
Right, rental, rental, year-round rental apartments, yes. That workforce housing now is only in the R twenty district. And, and there was, as, as you all know, there was an attempt to change the code to allow this workforce force housing in the Village Business District, but it was overturned in that lawsuit.
Yeah. Questions, anyone? The, in the business district, accessory apartments are very specific, specific in the, in the, in the code as well. I'm trying to remember the exact wording. I'm having, struggling to remember it, but.
I mean, if, my understanding of it, I'm going to, Liz, you can correct me here, is that they're allowed, is that you're allowed accessory apartments in an accessory building in the business district?
In VB.
Yeah. That's what I was saying, you know.
Yeah.
They actually work to our advantage, even though we would have to get the height variance to call those buildings
Right.
accessory buildings rather than additions to the primary.
Right, right.
It actually works better architecturally to, to give them as separate buildings.
Right, right.
I, I understand how you did your, I, I guess I would like to think about the parking in terms of providing incremental spaces to meet the code requirements of the addition. And I wasn't quite sure I followed that. The restaurant of sixteen to seventeen spots, what, what does the code actually require for?
Four, four seats per parking spot, right?
So forty-eight seats.
Twelve.
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 And then I think you're supposed to
And staff.
buy some first staff as well.
Right.
Some of the square footage.
So the sixteen to seventeen is, is a code requirement.
Yeah.
So, so you're short parking for the restaurant alone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right.
Yeah, my initial comment would be, you know, it, it seems to work with the apartments. Um, the restaurant doesn't seem to work with the site conditions. Um, that's just based on the parking calculation that, that you did. So and there's, there's already so many grandfathered spots. You know, those are grandfathered, but we also have to acknowledge that there are, there are already a significant amount of grandfathered spots for these two properties. So it's just, uh.
We'd have to see what those actually are, because sometimes you initially know I'm there. You know, the spots are not there, they were supposed to be, like, we had another distribution like that.
Right.
You have to look at the past approval, the last approval, the waiver of parking, and look at the actual plan that was approved and where those spots were.
Yeah.
You mentioned valet parking as a possibility. You're thinking outside the boxes, apparently.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if you, if you had any, any, any anything specific you came up with, or any, any other thoughts that you were thinking about aside from valet?
You know, I, I know, Drew, you had mentioned, talked to me about this very original discussion item about underground parking. And if that was feasible, it's, believe me, I spent a lot of time looking at underground parking lot designs and things like that. And this particular property, it's just not, you know, it's gonna work. We just don't have the width. And, you know, by the time you actually get down to the level, you've actually eaten up more space than you would have
Right.
for the ground parking. So I think that is, you know, I think unfortunately that's off, off the table.
You don't even know what's down below there anyway.
Yeah.
Right, when they were building out the watch case factory, and they were pounding these big pieces of metal coming up around the corner.
Yeah. Coffe along, yeah.
And they could barely get them in there. That's what, that's when I had to sit with the old man who had that little house across the street, who was crying because his house was shaking, as they pounded in the stone. And there could be, you don't know what you're going to find underneath there.
Right.
One, one good thing here is I think we're high enough above sea level that we're not going to have any water table issues.
Right. Yeah, I was looking at that. It says, it's a, for example, on the apartment building, the, the, I'm talking, first, first floor is twenty feet, is that right? First floor of the, of the apartment building is twenty feet, and then the ridge is seventeen feet above that?
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Do you mean accessory apartments in, in VB under the special exception use?
Yeah, I think that's.
So you should look at all those standards under three hundred and ten point six. Um, and one does say affordable workforce housing is priority. So you can see on the waiver of that site. Okay.
I think that's.
Is priority, okay. I didn't realize that was said that way.
It's, it's one of the standards.
Okay. Uh, well, I think it's maybe perhaps time to open this up to the public for a lot of the people in, in the audience here, and they want to comment on this. And don't go too far away, because we'll probably come back to you.
Yeah.
Um, and you, so if there's anyone in the public here or online that wants, wishes to speak to this, come on up. And please identify yourself and where you live at the podium. And if you would, keep it to, keep it concise. Technically, we have a two-minute length of time for per speaker, but I'm willing to be a little bit flexible if, if you're careful. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Vera Graf. I'm a neighbor to this proposed uh, building project. I live three houses up twenty-five Madison Street. I can see this project from my house. And I'm concerned mainly about parking. I just hear that this is a real problem. We get lots of people in the summer who just drive into our driveway and park. So you've seen traffic down Madison Street in the summer, it's bumper to bumper. And the traffic with a new restaurant will obviously increase, especially if it doesn't have enough parking spaces. The other concern is construction. We all know what streets look like in Sag Harbor when there's construction. You can barely get through. You know, there's so many vehicles, so much going on. That whole back church street, forget it. It's going to be horrible for one year. What else did I want to say? I'm not against business. I like businesses. I like development. I have two stores in my building. It's not that, you know, every new project, no. This project has big holes that I think you should look at, and I hope you do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please come up. Hello?
Thanks for your time. I'll be short. Sabina Streeter, my, I'm an artist. I have my studio on twenty-five Madison since twenty-five years. We lived through the whole boulevard construction of the shaking buildings, so I know what it entails. Um, I have one precise question. The accessory building on the, on eleven Madison, uh, was described in the plans that there were potentially previous historical buildings that it, uh, because right now there's no building on it. Uh, the former Christie's building, yes, that's the long building, but not behind eleven. And supposedly they're on postcards or maps is that there was a previous barn or stable, whatever. Does that exist? Are there photographs, there documentation? Can you just have a new building spilled out without pre-existing grandfathered structures? My second question is whether if this building goes up with the four apartments, each one seventy-five square feet, total building two thousand square feet, is this going to be affordable housing or not? But I think the rest.
Right, right.
These were my questions.
Good, thank you, thank you.
I just clarify, there's one thing about the historic buildings. Um, I think it's maybe more pertinent to the Architectural Review Board than this board. I mean, we're, the fact that there were, you know, a hundred years ago, there, these buildings existed, and there's some documentary evidence of does not, doesn't mean that we have anything grandfathered from them. We're not, we're not suggesting that at all. We're, we're still going to need the variances and et cetera for them. We're only saying that from a standpoint of, you know, whether or not an accessory building is appropriate for these properties. Our argument is just, well, it is, because they're work, that's accessory buildings.
Right. Um, Anthony, I'm just thinking too, was, did you mention that you might need, what's the smallest permissible size of an apartment in the code?
I believe it's, uh, I believe it's seven hundred fifty.
Yeah, I think it's lower, it's smaller than, I mean, it's larger than what you're proposing. So there's a variance required there, I believe, right?
Yeah, yeah, so that, there would be a variance requirement.
And is the reason that you're not considering workforce housing because it's not zoned in that district because of the?
You know, I, I, I don't think, I, it's not something, I don't think that we're, we're, the property owners are adverse to it. Um, I think that they need to be, I mean, quite frankly, they need to make the math work for it, you know? And if there is a way to make this move forward and of workforce housing and all of that, all of that entails of the covenants as part of that approval process. I think it's something that they would entertain, but I think that's something, you know, that they have to have their attorneys and whatnot discuss with you folks.
It's, it's an, my assumption was it was going to be workforce housing, you know, that's just my assumption. Um, and I was wrong about that, but, um, you know, you're building a restaurant, a business, which requires labor.
Yeah.
And, um, and, uh, there's an I believe in the business district, if work, if the parking uh, requirements are waived for workforce.
What is, what is the definition of workforce housing in this context? Because?
It's in chapter one fifty.
Help, that's only somewhat helpful.
I can read it to you. Hold on. I pulled up. And which buildings are you posing accessory or accessory? You're building two new accessory buildings?
So, yes.
You're putting a restaurant in the accessory building?
Right.
And you're considering that accessory to what?
To the primary structure of number three.
It's supposed to be a subordinate use building structure customarily or incidental to the same, so those located on the same lot. So are you going to be seeking a variance from the definition of accessory?
Okay.
She just don't. Um, I heard on the other one. Rent's the same. Unique.
The definition of workforce housing, affordable workforce housing is housing for individuals and families at or below one hundred and thirty percent of a median income for the Nassau Suffolk Primary Metropolitan Statistical Area as defined by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. For the purposes of this article, the affordable workforce housing units shall be of consistent design to those of the rest of the development.
So it's just a
It's a HUD standard, it's.
No, no, but it's just, it's an AMI. I mean, you may end up there de facto anyway.
If you had done five units, it would have required at least a set aside of ten percent pursuant to the law of workforce housing act, which is it's reclassified in chapter one fifty. But if you did less than five, it's not required under this particular section of the code.
Right.
To do affordable.
I think, okay. Anyone else in the audience who wants to speak? Please come up to the podium.
Hi, thank you. I'm Mary Gill. I currently live at eleven Madison. Um, but bought a house in East Hampton, moving out pretty soon. But, um, I'm, because I've been living in eleven Madison, I'm very attuned to how it functions back there. And I'm very, very concerned about the, um, high level of activity, traffic, people's, buildings, everything coming in there. It's, it's a very tight space. Sag Harbor is already claustrophobic and overwhelmed by everything anyway. And for the integrity of Sag Harbor and its beautiful historicness and, and the way that it is, it's really the only place out on the east end that has remained pretty true to itself in such a beautiful, excuse me, beautiful way. Um, so this feels like a very big development to come into a very small intimate space. So I'm concerned about that. Um, I know that everyone's concerned about the buildout and the, the traffic and construction during the year that it will take to build it. But, um, after that, when there's a restaurant and there are additional apartments, that little tiny church street is going to be packed. It's already packed. So that, I just don't see how this is going to really function well. And then I'm also concerned about the almost no green space left anymore. And I know there, that there, that plans are even under the minimum requirement for that. So anyway, I'm just expressing my concerns based on my experience with this space.
Okay, thank you very much for coming in. You can go back up, sure.
Sorry. Oh, I forgot to add something. So this is the historical business.
Say your name again, I'm sorry. For, for the, for the, uh, uh, for Barbara, our, our scenographer. We need your name again.
Sabina Streeter.
Thank you, Sabina.
Um, it's the historical business district. As far as I know, uh, most of the stores, most of the ones where I have my studio, they're zoned for dry uh, business, though I think it's called wet business restaurants and bars. How would it be possible to all of a sudden put a restaurant in what was traditionally an antique store for about twenty-five years? And I believe before that it was a liquor store, Christie's, but it was never a bar or restaurant. How can that be created? Is that, can you just put a restaurant there even though it was never zoned for that?
Well, it, it is, it actually is zoned for, it's, it's a
It's VB, right?
It's, yes.
So it's a permitted use with respect to it being a wet use. I think he's planning on hooking up to the sewer, is that right?
Yeah.
He wants to hook up to the sewer so that he can use that flow for the increased flow required for restaurants.
Which is another, because, yeah.
So that's why he would, you know, save the health department.
Okay, so it is zoned for a restaurant.
All of this Village Business District restaurants are permitted in the Village Business District.
Even if there was no restaurant existing before?
I mean, depending on whether they can get the, the required approvals and they're, they have enough flow on site or are hooked up to the sewer, it depends.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and they have to get permission from the
As far as a use, it's a permit.
They have to get permission to hook up to the sewer from the village board, or the village has to approve it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else in the audience who would, come on up, please?
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Hillary there, in Madison. You guys, I live on one twenty-five Main Street. Um, I just wanted to not caution, but let you know that valet parking, Anthony mentioned, it's come up in the past, it really makes the streets congested. So it's an option. I'm not sure that that would really be feasible. You have to, I don't know what kind of traffic study's been done. But the church had events a couple of years ago, and the coming and going on Madison Street created problems for, like, Cappuccino. I'm right on the other side of Cappuccino, and some of the other businesses in terms of heat breasts and fire and safety and ambulances, I think it's a consideration, also making it reservations on time. I think, uh, you know, it's something to think about in terms of an option, I think, and it's be fleshed out a little bit.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this particular topic? I see no hands in, in the audience, and no one online. If you want, very quickly, very quickly.
Can I just ask it from my seat here?
Uh, well, it's hard, it's hard for the stenographer to hear you, so that's why we ask you to come up here. I apologize, but it's, the, the microphones are that way.
Say my name again.
Please.
Vera Graf, neighbor. Um, question to you would be, would there be outdoor seating in this restaurant? It's not mentioned in your plan.
We're not planning it at this point, uh, no. Um, and we understand, we're understanding, I mean, my understanding is, is that sort of listening in on other projects that have been before that, sort of outdoor dining is kind of a different animal as far as parking requirements and things like that. So, and it's a different kind of approval process. So I think our I don't want anyone to skin, I can't speak entirely for what the owners thinking are on this, but I think the idea here is to kind of get, get the indoor seating as what we would do. We are planning on that big sort of banana door that can open up to the back, uh, to kind of give that sort of indoor-outdoor feel. to kind of give that sort of indoor/outdoor feel, but the seating would be inside the structure, so, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think that's it for questions from the public, from the audience. Did you want, anything that you want to respond to that you haven't had a chance to yet?
I, you know, I need to get back to the team here, with sort of, you know, how should we move forward with this? And just sort of, sort of some ideas here of what we should be looking at next.
I mean, that's what the pre-submission report is for too, not just getting feedback from the board, but from, for an actual report adopted by the board, giving you that feedback. And including all the variances you're going to need, et cetera.
So is that something where we actually wait for something formal to come from this board?
You do, yeah, yeah, a formal pre-submission report.
Okay, that's great, that's.
So, so I think that one thing that would be really helpful is to actually lay out the existing conditions and the uses, the square footage, and the before and after. So it's clear, I, it's, it's a little hard to follow, you explained it very well. But it, it would be really helpful to lay it out and say, okay, this is what's here now, this is what's going to remain, and this is what is proposed. So we have the big picture. I do know that, you know, we'll be asking for, you have to conform with the site plan requirements. And the sewer, connecting to the sewer, getting approval for that flow, that's a village board. We, there's stormwater management. There'll, there'll need to be, yeah, there's a lot.
Fully A F, sorry.
Yeah, a fully A F will be required, we'll have to do coordinated review on this. So there's a number of, number of steps, and that will be laid out, it will be precision. But if that is something that you could provide in advance, that would be helpful for us, because we could, we could include that, and that would help us to understand if there are additional variances, we might be able to identify them. Okay, so, but the board can say whatever it wants, of course.
I'd ask your client to consider doing housing on both sites. There's much less impact on the parking.
Instead of the restaurant or an addition?
No, instead.
Instead, that's.
Kathy, we typically get, do you turn around with a, a report on this pre-submission conference, usually within sixty days or something, I think, is that what our?
Yeah, sixty days is to be, that's by code, after ten days after the the close of the public hearing.
Yes.
So there is a little bit of time, but we can get started on it right away.
Right.
And try to have something to next meeting.
Right.
I can't promise.
You can't promise, we, we try, we try to be.
If you're closed with a ten-day record comment here.
That's right.
The hearing stays open for ten days if you want to submit great comments.
Right.
No, we understand this is going to be a process, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We got to start it somehow.
I just, you just have one last question. Because you are keeping them as two separate lots, would the village, would it have to consider the parking for each individual structure versus, like, you're kind of saying a combined parking lot, but what if they sell one of the properties?
They'd have to do an easement to share parking.
Yeah, so that.
They have a shared cross-access parking easement.
So that would be a part of the ask as well, potentially.
Something we had talked with, with Ken at the very beginning, you know, some kind of parking easement, so that they both can, you know, that, that's carried with the property ownership.
Sometimes boards like them to actually merge the properties if they're being used so closely together like that. But often you have to consider increasing the degree of non-conformity in these lots.
Right.
Because you're, you've merged it into one big lot with a ton of stuff on it. So I don't know if you want to do that.
Right, right. Okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you very much. And I think we need to, Kathy, you're, you're good, you have what you need? I think we need to, I need a motion to close the public hearing. With a ten-day comment period, thank you, Granja. Thank you, Drew, for seconding, all those in favor of closing.
Hi.
Unanimous. I think we've reached the end of our meeting. I will, I will move to adjourn. Anyone want to second that?
Second.
Thank you, Larry, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, audience, for being here tonight and asking the questions.
Good night, everybody, have a good night.